We are now in session. I will introduce you to the board to my right, Bob Signetti, John Bonner, Jeff Sauer, Ken Jarvin, and Corinne Doherty, and from the -- I'm Ken Scholes, your chair, from the zoning -- from the building inspector's office, Rich Maloney and Kathy Archibald, secretary. We will read the minutes of the cases. Could everybody please turn off cell phones if they are on? Thank you. Procedure will be we'll read the cases, have the applicant come up and tell us what they would like to do. We will deliberate as a board, ask questions. We will go to the audience and let them ask questions if they want, and then we will come back, deliberate, and then we will vote and give you your options as to what you can do with your case. Motion to accept minutes from the last meeting.
So moved.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I think we're okay to start with our first case.
Okay. Mr. Chair, our first continued case is Paul Malvich and Jean Dion, docket number 19-4817, requesting a variance to allow construction of a duplex on a property with less than required area in accordance with section 2.9, table 2 of the Denver zoning bylaws at 56 Adams Street.
Thank you very much. My name is Nancy McCann. I'm here on behalf of the applicant. I'm New England Land Trust, John Thompson cannot be here this evening. I'm here in his place. We are requesting a variance for the property located at 56 Adams Street. It's located in the R1 zoning district primarily, and the property currently has an existing home on the site. It is non-conforming as it is located nine feet from the front setback where 20 feet is required. The New England Land Trust, the applicant has, since the filing of this application, has acquired title to this property in the name of 56 Adams Street. They own the property of this property. The prior owners of this property have fallen into some public issues. The property was scheduled for foreclosure, and the property had gone into a great deal of disrepair. We do have some photographs with the application that indicate that the property, not only is the building non-conforming, but there was a great deal of debris on the property, shed, and other items located in the no disturb zone under the rules and regulations. And again, it was set for foreclosure. The applicant approached the then owners of the property and had an agreement to avoid foreclosure to acquire the property. And in so doing, they did a couple of things. First, they reviewed the property and the condition and what was located in the Conservation Commission jurisdiction and what would have to be done to clean up the site and deal with those nonperformities. They did go to the Preservation Commission and received a determination that the property is not historically significant so that it could be demolished, and determined that really the way to deal with this property, given its condition and given the site itself and the deterioration and the weapons issues, they would need to demolish the property and construct a small duplex to make this as financially viable as possible. Looking at the assessor's records, when the applicant entered into the purchase and sale agreement, the assessor's record indicates this property has 19,800 square feet and 115 feet of frontage. Property had been assessed, taxes paid, based on 19,820 square feet. The applicant then went forward with this agreement and had a survey done and found out unfortunately that the property only contains 13,349 square feet. It does have 115 feet of frontage, but it was significantly faulty in the assessor's on size. So, we filed an application for variance to allow the property to proceed forward with the construction of a fully conforming duplex on the site. It will meet the setback requirements, it will meet all of the side setback and front setback requirements. Part of this process is cleaning up the weapons, removing the shed that's located in the no disturb zone, but we would need a variance in order to allow the duplex to be constructed on a lot with 13,349 square feet because the assessor's records were incorrect. Again, this would allow a new duplex attractive, fully conforming, meeting the front setbacks, and restoration of the Conservation Commission jurisdiction area. The applicant did go forward and received an order of conditions from the Conservation Commission to allow that work for restoration of the site and a full cleanup of the no disturb area and the no build area. And then we, and so we filed for that variance application. Since that time, however, the applicant has gone forward and acquired additional land so that the site now does have more than 15,000 square feet. So the lot area is now conforming to the R1 lot area requirement for a duplex. It has more than the required frontage. We're required to have 80 feet of frontage, we have 115. And we now have a lot size that is in excess of 15,000 square feet. We have a lot area of 15,095 square feet. And that was done by the acquisition of a slice of property right here. And that's a good location to acquire property in that the buffer zone and the stream that runs, the intermittent stream that's shown on your plan, runs in this section. So now we're able to work with the Conservation Commission and really control both sides of that intermittent stream. So that has occurred. So the lot size is now over 15,000 square feet. We now have both sides of the string working with the Conservation Commission for the cleanup. And we thought we were all set for proceeding forward with the duplex. Unfortunately, the building inspector is taking the position that the 15,000 square feet required for a duplex all has to be in the R1 zoning district. This property is abutted by Yold Silvania, now a large office in industrial complex. And this strip that was acquired is actually is in I-2. So, we have the required total area, but we are in need of a variance because a small portion of that is located in the I-2 zoning district. So, the application has improved since it was originally filed. We do have the total area that we need, but this strip is located in the industrial 2 zoning district. So the entirety of the 15,000 square feet is not located in the R1 zoning district per the building inspector's interpretation. Do you and I agree on that? No, but that's -- or hopefully not another day. So we requested the variance to allow us to go forward with construction of the duplex that will be fully conforming on a lot with over 15,000 square feet, but a portion of that, a small portion of that, 1,746 square feet is located in the I-2 zoning district. This will, a minimal variance, it will eliminate a nonconformity because remember the existing home is only nine feet from the front setback where 20 feet is required. It will allow us to clean up the area that you see in the photographs, and in fact, the applicant who had paid has gone forward and has done some cleanup of the property since he's acquired it. And it will allow him to deal with the fact that their assessor's records were not what we had anticipated going into the agreement. And it will allow a cleanup of the site that we think will be an overall vast improvement for existing conditions for the neighborhood. Do we have any other questions?
Thank you, Nancy. By the way, Kathy, Corinne will vote on this one. You've had a lot of hurdles on this.
Every twist and turn, not particularly expected. We thought it was fairly straightforward going into it, and then we did a survey.
Right. All right, I guess we'll start down with you, Bob, for questions.
Really don't have a lot of questions. I mean, it's quite clear you've got an old dilapidated house. You want to knock it down and put in two duplex. I don't have any questions.
John?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Attorney McCann, so when did we find out that the assessor's numbers were wrong? When did that come to light?
That came to light after entering into the purchase and sale agreement, but before obviously the application to you.
What was the timeframe like?
March, April. This application was filed with you back in April, and the reason we continued it was because we thought we were going to be able to resolve the problem by acquiring this strip.
Okay. So, if this was a 15,000 square foot lot without the mix of I-2 and R1, are you before us?
No.
Because it's fully conforming?
Correct.
And is there a rendering of the?
Yes.
We didn't get that, right?
No, you didn't, but I have them here. It's a small duplex, single car garage.
What are the, what's the square footage on each unit?
They're about 1,800 square feet. They're all the same.
And no change in the curb cut or anything like that? I have no further questions.
See if she'll take a question.
Thank you.
Jeff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't really think I have any questions.
To build this. And Ken?
What's the timeline on the removal? I know they already started from the conservation part of the land.
How long do we have?
Yeah, I mean, what, no. What's your timeline to remove that? It's going to be totally removed by the time you're done with the project, I assume. It's not going to linger, right?
No, 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 no. That really, they have begun doing a lot of the cleanup. I went by there a day or two ago and the Thompson's won. It's been in pretty bad shape for a long time. So they actually have started some of the cleanup.
Yeah, no other questions.
Corinne?
I have a couple of questions. This rendering that you provided to us, I know that on the plans, you have four parking spaces in front in addition to the garage?
Yes.
Could you show, the drawings are somewhat confusing, where each one of those four parking spaces will be? I know where the one on the right, the one space is, but then it said three spaces on the other side?
Yep, there's one, two, three, right in there. Okay? So within this space, there's three parking spaces. There's one on this side, and then there's a garage space, one garage space each. So that gives us a total of the required six parking spaces.
And did we, did you provide in the supplemental package a copy of the new deed, the deed into the owners?
I did not, but I have it with me. You have to translate that to you.
Yeah, sorry.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
There are also, I didn't mention, there along this street, across the street, on the other side of Adams Street, there are three properties that have duplexes as well.
I don't think I have any questions.
I have one more.
Yeah, I do as well.
Is this the building you're going to build?
Yes.
Would you take that as a condition, that you build this building?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
It absolutely is, looks very familiar.
Yeah, it does look the same.
We just want to make sure, that's all.
Mr. Chair, yeah, I actually want to go to the building inspector. Of course, no, I forgot. Oh, does this go to site plan?
No.
So where are the site plan on this one?
It's a duplex.
Yeah. So, stay in residential here, typical lighting, residential landscaping in power with the neighborhood.
And virtually all of the area in the back is under the Conservation Commission jurisdiction as well as really of the site as well. And that's been reviewed and an order of conditions is issued. And this will all simply be grass and natural.
So what kind of, as far as drain management, storm drain stuff, has any worked? So this back of the lot now doesn't get touched at all?
Well, it gets cleaned up.
Gets cleaned up, but I mean, no drainage, just being put in?
No.
And no plantings, no tree buffers or anything?
Yeah, plantings along the side, which are noted on your plan.
Yeah.
Okay? And then this is an intermittent stream that is just going to hopefully go back to a natural area. We have a proposed edge of lawn up to this point. Conservation Commission doesn't want against us to get any closer than that. So that's the edge of lawn, and there's actually some bounds that get put into market. And then there's, there's just the intermittent stream in the back that will hopefully be able to thrive in its natural state when it isn't full of stuff.
And the abutting lot where you show a garage, do we know the setback on that one? Is that conforming?
I do not know the abutting properties.
Those are building inspector?
Yeah, well, I mean, those properties are over 100 years old, so anything's conforming down at that.
So it's unlikely.
Adams Street.
Yep. All right, no further questions, thanks.
Thank you. These are deeded townhouses, right? They're not, they're not renting them.
Right, they'll be condos.
Okay, any questions from the audience?
Bill Radstreet, town meeting member precinct one. If when this piece of property was acquired, if the building that's there now were just using the same footprint replaced with a newer house, would the applicant be before you or just the plan anymore?
Well, I think they were, they're not, they were nonconforming to begin with, the front setback was only nine feet.
Yes.
That's why I mentioned the footprint, using the same footprint.
Right, they would have been nonconforming.
They would have been finding.
They would have been, yeah. But far finding.
I mean, they could rebuild, they could rebuild a single family home by right if they had the setbacks, but they wanted to tear down and rebuild with the same footprint.
Right.
Okay.
Thank you. Deliberating. Would we start with Bob?
Yeah. I will vote for this as long as we get this building.
I think this will be a vast improvement to what's there, and I hope it goes as planned. So I do will vote for it.
Thank you, Jeff.
I agree with Bob. I will vote for this with the condition.
Ken, I would vote for this as well. And Corinne?
I will vote for this.
Yeah, I would vote for this. I mean, I don't think that section of land is a game changer in any way, and this, obviously this lot is in dire need of some improvement. So I would vote for this as well. Can I get a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we grant the variance to build a duplex on less than the required land area in the Residence One District per table 2 of the zoning bylaws. The hardship is stated on the application with the condition that this is the building that goes on it.
The rendering matches.
Oh, I don't, I don't know how we refer it. To the picture presented to us.
Is that picture going to be in the package? Can it be in the package?
Well, you can just say that it will match. It's the same building as 174 Pine Street.
It'll, it'll match 174 Pine Street.
174 Pine Street, okay. All those in favor?
I, you need a second.
You need a second. There you go.
No.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Good luck.
Good luck.
How are they off by 6,000 square feet? Did that happen a lot, the assessors? How are they off by so many? It doesn't happen to often.
I would bet that they sold.
I wonder if they filed for an abatement.
I don't know, I would.
I would.
Mr. Chairman, our next case, our next continued case is Brian Arman, docket number 19-4819, requesting a dimensional variance for a side setback relief to five feet for a 16 by 24 garage in accordance with section 7, table 2 of the Denver zoning bylaws at 89 Pine Street.
Good evening. My name's Ryan Arman, my wife and friend is here with me also. I was here before the board in June, and my wife and I were to build a D-dash garage. The specific hardships that we have are the size and shape of the lot, the location of the house and the lot, and the quality of the product itself. My original application was for a five-foot setback. All of the board members at the time were concerned about that request. Some of you mentioned a willingness to compromise and suggested a smaller structure. I have modified my application to be for a seven-foot setback. I've reduced the size of the garage to 14 feet wide, and I've changed the sofa design to be six inches to minimize the overhead, which was a point of concern to us. So I've submitted some updated drawings. Included in my updated application is a sheet showing nine properties visible from my house, from my lot, each of which has a garage as close or closer to that which I requested. The point there being that what I'm proposing and requesting is consistent with what is in the neighborhood. And I'd like to remind the board that included in my original application is a letter from the buyer supporting the project with a five-foot setback. If you look at the, at what I've submitted, you can see the garage is 14 feet wide, we're just six foot soft it. Are you guys seeing, did you get this?
Yep. Yep, we got it.
Okay, all right, good. Okay. So that's, that first drawing, you see the location, proposed location. It's similar before, showing seven feet instead of five feet. And I have some elevation drawings in there. I included a subject detail which Madam Chair was concerned about, which she's not going to see. You can see that I have a proposed top view elevation which shows that 14-foot garage with a seven foot from the drip edge to the property. So it's from the drip edge.
Is that it? Kathy, Ken will vote on this one. We'll start with Corinne this time.
I don't have any questions. I was fine with it the last time, so I'm fine this time.
Ken?
I don't have any questions either.
I have no questions, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, no questions.
Same here.
I have no questions as well. Any questions from the audience? Mr. Radstreet.
Bill Radstreet again, town meeting member precinct one. I'm aware of the property, the building, and I do know the folks who are asking for your help, and I too would be in favor of their application.
Thank you. And we'll go back to the board for reparations.
I will vote for this.
Well, you, you did what we, we asked, so I will vote for this.
Jeff?
I will vote for this.
Yeah, I appreciate the applicant's willing to make some changes here to make it more conforming, and I will vote for it.
I also will vote for it. Can I get a motion?
Where are we going? The variance?
Yes.
I move to grant the dimensional variance from side setbacks from 15 feet to seven feet, correct? Not five, right? In a rez 2 district for a, is it 16 by 24?
14.
14 by 24 garage based on the hardship on the application.
14.
Yeah, 14, right? 14 by 24?
Yeah.
Okay. This condition does not affect other properties or structures in the same zoning district. A little enforcement of the zoning bylaws would involve a substantial hardship to the applicant, and granting this variance will not create a substantial detriment to the public good and will not nullify or substantially derogate from the intent or purpose of the zoning bylaws.
Can I get a second?
I will second that.
Before we second, should we mention the 14-foot setback too?
That's a good point for maybe the building inspector, there's a 14.
Because the 14. Fourteen and a 14.
The 14's also not complying.
Well, it's a seven feet as you're giving the variance for the.
Right.
The closest point.
As submitted.
As, okay.
As submitted. So we had a second?
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Good luck.
Good luck.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you again for.
Move and rate along, yeah.
Our final case.
Was it?
Yes, sir.
All right. Mr. Chairman, our last continued case of the evening is Target Corporation, Matthew Flensburg, docket 19-4823, requesting a variance for directional signage, height and area increase in accordance with section 37, point A, point 7A of the Denver zoning bylaws at 240 Independence Way, commercial 3-zone.
Good evening.
Hi. Good evening.
Sorry, excuse me. I'm Tom McGarrett with Kinley Horned Associates, one of our target program leaders for the East Coast. With me today, in quest for Target, someone from Indianapolis today to help answer any of your questions or requests you have with the program. I'll just give a brief summary and then we'll open it up for questions. Originally here in June, my partner, Chris Yates, presented to you guys about the 12-foot drive-up sign that Target is trying to implement for their drive-up program for customer convenience and to remain competitive in the industry. Now, you had a bunch of questions and comments from that meeting. We submitted follow-up information at the July meeting, and hopefully you had time to review that, but that was to address any of your comments from the June meeting as well. Then we're here today to ask for your approval of the variance or answer any questions that you had today.
Okay, I'll start with you, Bob.
I did read this, and there's a couple of questions I had. What time does the store close?
I believe the store's closing at 11:00 p.m.
Well, the store's open till 11:00. Okay, then that's, because you did mention the sign would be lit till 11:00.
It corresponds to the store hours.
All right, that's, I don't have, that sounds good. Right now, you have in-store pickup, right?
Right.
Okay. And where do those people park?
They park anywhere in the park. They have to park.
So those pushups have got to get out of the car and walk.
Into the guest service desk.
Okay. Now, here's a thought. If you had a designated parking spot for the people you, you want now, the people that are online, and then you bring the stuff out to the car.
Yeah.
If I were one of those in-store pickup people, guess where I would park? In this spot here. Right, inline, inline pickup. So, in, in reading this, it says the store would actually do nothing if there was somebody parked in the if there was somebody parked in the store in that designated parking spot. So not only would I'm guessing that the pickup, in-store pickup people would park there, I think other people would smarten up and park there too, since you're not gonna do anything, no towing, no nothing. That's what this says.
Right.
So now I'm the customer that I want delivered to my car, and I can't find a parking space. So what happens then?
Well, I can tell you that if, if, if somebody were to go, go into the store to pick something up, it's probably about a two-minute, three-minute turn. So they're ending up pretty quickly. And what we're seeing so far is we're averaging about 20 order pickups a day that get delivered out to your car. So it's not that many cars, so we're not, at this point, we're not concerned that there's gonna be that much of these parking spots.
How many spaces are you gonna designate?
Four.
Okay. And when I was down there today, there's, uh, there's a door that says, "Online Pickup." Is that, is that where you're gonna do the, um, this too?
Yeah, so the, right in front of that door, there's accessible stalls, so we can't put it there. So we have to go one side of them. So we'll do it towards the other door. So it's as close as we can get without infringing upon those.
That was my next question about the handicap spots.
Yeah.
That was, that was all in front. Alright, walk me through. I buy something online, and the reason I have it delivered in the store is because I don't have to pay shipping. Is that the deal?
That's one of the advantages, yeah.
Actually, that's the only advantage, when you think about it.
Yeah, true, yeah.
Alright, so now I order it. It comes in the store. Now, you guys call me. How do I know it's in the store?
You'll, you'll get an email.
You'll get an email?
Yeah.
Okay. And now, now what do I do? Email you back and say, "I'll be there Thursday at 5:00 o'clock," or...
So here, currently, we've got two separate things. One is order pickup, where you go into the store.
I understand that.
The other is order drive-up. And so order pickup, you order on the Target website, and it takes, it may take two days and it can take three days. So when it comes into the store, it gets held. You have to come, physically come into the store.
I got that.
Okay, so for the order-drive-up, you have to order on, on your phone, on the app.
Yep.
So you select the order-drive-up. And so it's gotta be in the store for you to get it.
Alright, well, you already told me that, because email.
So, and then within, say, 30 minutes to an hour, you'll get an email back saying your order is ready for, for pickup.
Right.
And so what you'll do is, um, there's an option on the, on the app, the phone app. You say, "I'm on my way," so the store team knows that you're coming.
Okay.
So you pull into the spot, and then there's an option to say, "I'm here." And you can, you can say what kind of vehicle you have, what color.
Okay.
So then they, within a minute to two minutes, they'll bring that, that, your order up to you.
So is there a designated employee just for this?
It's, um, there's a number of employees I work at the guest service desk, so I'm gonna be one of those employees.
Alright, so we don't have to go look up for somebody?
No, they'll come right up to you. Stay in your car and...
No, but I mean, there'll be somebody there who knows what to do?
Yep, yep. There'll always be somebody at guest service.
You know, 'cause a lot of times I've gone to the store, "Well, I don't know, ask Harry, and Harry asks Joe, and Joe's at lunch," and that kind of stuff. Alright, so there'll be a number of employees who will know what to do?
Yep.
And they'll bring it to the, the car?
Yep.
Now, I noticed they have to cross a road?
Yep.
To bring it to the car? So that could be tricky. So somebody's gonna come out with a dolly or whatever and deliver it to the car?
It's usually in bags or carry unless it's gonna be something heavy.
Another question I had. Can I do my grocery shopping like that?
Not quite yet. Forget that.
Alright, so just in the future, I could give you a grocery list. You guys would shop for me. I drive up, and you put it in the trunk of my car?
Yeah, that's the ultimate goal. Currently, we do have a...
At no extra charge?
Yeah. We do have a program called Shipt right now. I don't know if you're familiar with that, but you can actually order things and somebody will go shopping for you, and that includes groceries. But that's a, that's a fee-based system. And they'll bring it to your house as well.
They'll bring it to your house?
Bring it to your house.
At no extra charge?
No, no, that's the fee-based membership. That's...
Oh, alright, so that's...
Yeah. But we're, um, the ultimate goal is to, for food as well.
Okay, now, um... I'm lost in train, oh. Are there other, other than Target? I'm, I'm sure there are other companies that do this, online delivery to cars. Is that correct?
Yes.
Any of you know of?
One of our big competitors, kind of similar.
Yeah. Do they use totem poles to, to signify where to go?
Yeah, yeah. They use, you know, totem poles or... There's some stores where you gotta park it up against the building. Unfortunately, we don't have that here.
Well, some stores just have a sign that says, "Online Purchase Parking," or something like that, right? They don't have a lit-up pole.
Some probably do.
Yeah. But you decided not to go that route.
Well, the reason we need yours is what we want. We want a safe and convenient experience for, for our guests. And if you can imagine, as you're driving there, it's a fairly big parking lot. We've got a lot of cars in that. So what we want to do is have a visual cue. So if somebody's driving in the parking lot, they see where they're supposed to go. So they don't have to drive to the parking lot and figure out where the spots are that they're supposed to park. So that's good for the guests, and that's good for our team member that has to bring it out to them. So they're not going around the parking lot, so it's a short time.
Now, a lot of those cases, when it's on the building, there's a pull-up loading zone that the cars are pulling to go to, which we don't, we don't have often for that.
But the only advantage to that pole is for the first-time buyer. Because once I've been there once, I know where to go. I don't need a pole to tell me where to go, right?
We have some of the smartest guests in the industry that we'd like to remind them every time.
So, um, we, we're just talking about a small percentage of people who just did it the first time. After that, you know, the old pros know where to go and how to park and so forth and so on. Now, are you still gonna do the in-store pickup too?
Yes.
So those guys are still gonna have to schlep from the back of the parking lineup and, and bring the stuff out. Alright, now, we'll have any other questions?
Thank you. Hold on one second.
Yep.
Corinne's gonna vote on this one.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, so if I read your document correctly, there's still no other sites in Massachusetts that currently have this up and running, correct?
I did confirm, uh, Sagas is probably the closest one that's operational right now.
So there is one?
In, uh...
Everett, I thought I saw, right? Was it Everett?
Everett, unfortunately, we got hung up in our, uh, permitting for that one, so we've got the spots cleared out, but we're still under the pole limit.
So you're saying in Sagas, you're up in operational with this exact setup? With these totem poles, the whole deal's the same?
Yeah. Westwood is a while, but that's...
Um, I, I, you know, I, it's probably more in the comment area, but I still just don't like the, uh, your chosen delivery method to these vehicles. I, I just envision problems with this. And I believe I asked this at the original meeting, and I'll ask again. What, uh... What work did you guys do to explore other locations on this site to do this? For instance, just to Bob's point, why, why take up these prime spots out front that don't have a crosswalk directly to them that are gonna create a hazard with, uh, you know? I mean, crosswalks are great, but, um, I, I can't envision your employees are always gonna use that crosswalk to get the material across the street. They're gonna take the shortest path. So what other spots at this location in Danvers did we look at setting this up at?
Well, I, I can say that across the entire program, we've selected spots that are as close to the front building as we can. We look at it as, instead of having the customer cross that lane twice to pick up, we're doing that for them. So I would argue that there's not any additional trips per se, but it's our team member that's making the trip instead of our guests parking there and, and walking in and out of the store. So, um, we have, we, we don't put them any further than that because we don't want our team member to walk behind any more cars than they absolutely have to. So that's, they're always as close to the door as we can. And we made the decision that we're gonna take up these, these spots right in front for this.
Well, I think I asked this one before too, and I'll ask it again. What's the hardship here? I mean, to me, you're creating your own hardship. So I'll let you explain that one to me.
I would say, um, again, we, we wanna provide a safe and convenient experience. And if you can imagine, there's a couple SUVs sitting in front of these signs. You're not gonna see them until you're light up on top of the signs. So what we don't want is people unnecessarily driving around. If they know that there's designated spots to pick up, we don't want them driving around the parking lot having to, to look out at the pavement to try to find what's being picked up.
Alright, I have no further questions.
I think the hardship is the size of this pole. This lighted pole.
Well, they're creating the pole though.
I mean, some of the hardship to me would be the lot dimensions. It's a over a thousand-foot deep lot. So if you're entering, we don't control our own entrances the way the lots some, some divided. So using the current ordinance at 4 feet high, 4 short feet, we don't feel that we could safely direct traffic to get to those spots. We have a deeper lot, deeper entrance. So they're on the south side and they're coming in. It's over 500 feet away from those spots. They, they need to be able to navigate in their safety.
Jeff?
I have no questions, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
So these, um, so you have 17 spots that are designated for... Now, what are those spots exactly designated for? They're scattered around? Yeah, well, here's your print. You have 17, 1 through 17?
Oh, those are pictures, sorry. All the, all the pictures that are in there, that correspond to...
Hey, you're only, you're doing four spots, right?
Oh, okay, so there's only, well, I count five. There's five cars circled in that little picture?
Yeah, so, yes, yes. So this is a, for like the photo map of somebody driving around a, a current Target that has a drive-up going. So that, that is where that beacon that's installed, the spots is.
Yeah, so they're looking from that, where you numbered it, to see... Alright, so that, that's the vantage point. But right here, you circled five. Is there four spots or five in the front for pickup?
What that is, that's, uh, it's, it's not head and parking. It's only one, one-roll parking. So instead of doing two across each other, we do five in a row.
Okay. So there's five spots?
Just five.
Okay, not four. Um, how many of these 12-foot signs do you have?
Probably around 15 hundred?
No, I mean, in this parking lot, are you gonna put just one?
Just one.
Okay, and it's gonna be where these five car, you know, where the spots are located?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, I just got confused, 'cause I saw...
So what we're proposing here is, um, we're taking six stalls. Two on the outside are straight for parking. One in the middle is the walkway for the weekend. So that's where the, the team member can walk between the cars.
Okay. Okay. No more questions.
How many handicap spots do you have out in front of your store? Do you know?
No.
No. I'm just, I'm just thinking between, I'm, I'm thinking how crowded it is sometimes in that space. You have Best Buy, then you have Target, you have all those other stores. And it seems as if it's so congested, there's so many handicap spaces. And then on top of that, now you're gonna take five primo spots, and no one can park there except for those 20 people in a day. And it's like, so everyone else is gonna be parking a long, long way away.
Actually, anybody can park there according to this.
No, no, I know, but, but then that will cause even more problems like right out in front. Because people are gonna be parked there waiting for someone to get out of that space who's actually inside shopping for two hours.
Bingo.
So that's...
I can say that we, we have 15 hundred of these online so far, and we haven't, we haven't heard any complaints from the store team or guests.
But do you always have them, that the space is right out in front of the store?
Always.
Maybe we're just not as nice in this town. I can just see there being road rage out in front of, um, Target. So I don't have any other questions.
Thank you. That was my original issue with this whole thing, what if somebody parks in those spots?
I have one addition.
I don't have the minutes in front of me, but did we talk about the height of these, of this tower?
Yeah.
I thought we did.
Yeah.
And asked them to reduce it?
No.
No, I didn't ask to reduce it.
No, what happened was, was, uh... I asked the chair, Madam Chairwoman to pull the panel here to see if a reduced tower would fly.
Right.
And it didn't.
Okay.
So why ask them to do it?
Right.
If they couldn't get it anyway?
Okay, thank you, Jeff. It's all too high, right? That's all we said. Okay. I don't have any further questions. I'll wait for comments.
I got one addition.
Okay, one more question, John?
Um, so, you know, one of the things that always strikes me with things like this is, and this comes up a lot when we're given, um, traffic studies. And the traffic studies always paint a rosy picture. And it's always great, right? There's never a traffic increase, or chip rate increase. It's always, yeah, there's, there's gonna be no impact. What have you guys seen, uh, that's, that's kinda worked against you, um, in this program in the Northeast? Not these Florida or California pictures I'm looking at. And don't say nothing.
I'm not aware of any problems that we have, I mean, it's...
I mean, so for instance, to Bob's point, how often do you find people are just squatting in those spots? That just go in to shop? Or maybe go in for your online pickup, 'cause they're confused that this is part of the online pickup program?
Um, I can tell you, at least in, uh, there's, there's, I'm on, uh, visiting all of our stores along the way, we have probably two dozen. And we did, it was about 95 degrees that day. We saw a lot of people park up on the sidewalk, and then we did see a couple people park in those, um, in the drive-up spots. Uh, I think a lot of that had to do with the weather, probably, uh, just 'cause it was so hot that day. But for most, I mean, that was probably, we saw that at three stores out of 20. So it, um, I think generally, people respect it. Again, you know, with the, the 20 trips a day that we've seen so far, um, we don't think it's gonna be a problem. You may in the future, if it does become a problem, have to monitor it or do something.
And, and you...
Don't let it toll our guests.
Sure. Yeah, I understand that. Um, and, and I guess, so I'm guessing here, you guys can kinda dictate the pickup times? You're not gonna have stacking issues, for instance?
Right, right, yeah. So as part of that, too, is, is when you get the "I'm on my way," there's a notification from the guest to the store team, so they can kind of anticipate how many, how many people are coming in.
Okay. And security-wise, you're not worried about your people rolling out there with a big flat screen at night, or anything like this?
Um, we always worry about them, um, but if, if it becomes an issue, that will happen.
I have no further questions.
Thank you, John. Um, any questions from the audience? No, Mr. Brown Street, okay. All right, where did I start?
Instead of...
Sorry.
Uh, I'm intrigued with your term "guests." I prefer to be a customer, by the way, not a guest. A guest eats for free, sleeps for free, does everything else. Customer pays for free.
Taxes are free.
Good, yeah. You know, I'm, I'm a little amazed. A little bit I know about marketing. I know the hardest thing is to get people to go into the store. And once you get people in the store, there's a very high percentage that they're gonna buy. But you actually are keeping people out of your store, and limiting them only to what they bought on the internet. So I don't know if anybody has studied that, and this, at least the guy that comes in to pick it up at the, at the counter, he's in the store, he may look around and get some milk, and get some bread, or, or do something. But has anyone ever thought of that? You're, you're actually keeping customers out of your store, when that's the hardest thing to do, to get them to come in?
Yeah, uh, we have. I mean, the good thing is that at least there's still shopping in Target. And I think 99.5% of the people are still physically coming into the store. I mean, it's a very small bunch of trips right now that are, are using this service. And another piece is just convenience. If, um, somebody's on the way home, they've got the kids in the backseat, you know, want to get out of the car, you know, pull it up, it's a very easy way to show them. So I, I think that's been the target market.
A quick question. Is there a limit as to the purchase, the amount of the purchase?
No, the more the better.
No, no, that, no, I'm, let's go the other way.
No, minimum, no.
You can't buy a toothbrush, though.
Why not? That, you know, really? Could I buy a $5 item over the internet?
Chopstick.
And you can, and get on there and spend $10 worth of gas and pick it up?
And I hope the young people don't get old with this one, huh? We're killing them.
All right, anyway, um, I don't have a problem with your internet sales. I mean, that's your business, you do whatever you want, so what? I do have a problem with this lit-up red pole in the middle of the parking lot. I would prefer signs, and I would vote for signs that say "Internet parking pickup only" in the designated spots, and I'd be happy with that. But I'm not voting for a pole.
John?
Yeah, uh, I mean, I'm really torn on this one. I, um, I can see your point to the, the, the mom or dad who's got kids in the car, and needs diapers and this and that, and to not have to get out. Uh, I still say you're creating your own hardship, um, by the location of this. I, I, I don't know if I see the value in lighting it up either, but, uh, you know, signage would work for me. I don't know if it needs to be lit, but I guess I would vote for it as presented.
Jeff?
I would vote for this as presented. I wouldn't vote for this as presented. I think it's an economic hardship, and we don't really allow those. But, I mean, with signage, I would probably vote, vote for that. Non-lighted signage, like Bob stated. I think that's just too extreme, 'cause you have the 12-foot pole, then you get the solar panel on top, which makes it like, what, 14 feet? Yeah, so I, I think it's a little excessive. It sets precedent for the rest of the companies in the, in the mall, and I just don't think we should see those everywhere. 'Cause you know Best Buy's gonna see that, and they're gonna want it. And then Kohl's, and then wine and more, and then Dick's. So I'm just saying, I, I'd rather keep it signage and a minimal height.
I just have a, a problem with the location of those parking spaces. I would prefer them to be off to the side. And if someone has to walk a further distance, your people are getting paid to do that. So I'd rather have them walk the distance than, in that the, the people who are doing the online buying, they're not even getting out of their car, so they don't care what space they pull into. So I would vote for this, if you just move those spaces. And leave the spaces in front for the people who are actually going into the store.
That's a good point.
Thank you.
If I, if I could, uh, where would you want to see that? Because the thing to remember is that if you can't go any further to the right, because that's not a problem. And if we go further to the left, we're gonna be to the next one. So we're, we're kind of...
Well, if I were you, I would push them further down to like the, the, at least the, the middle of the parking lot, and put the five spaces there.
Less, less likely people would...
Yeah, I, I do think that would be less likely for people to jump on.
So we have ADA stalls here, and then we have ADA stalls there. So these are the two doors, so we either go here or here. And then we get over here, and this is, uh...
Now, how far up do your spaces go? All the way?
Yeah, we won't, we won't do this. It's too far for our, our team members to walk into the parking lot.
Well...
That becomes a safety issue.
Well, why isn't it a safety issue for your patrons?
Right. Well, that's just the way it is. I mean, parking lots are parking lots, we can't do anything about that.
All right, well, again, I, I would vote for it, but only if the spaces were, were in the middle and, and not the, the, the spaces out in front.
Not the rock-staff parking.
What did you say?
Rock-staff parking. I had to learn about that from young people.
So are you all set?
Yes, I'm all set.
Okay. So I went to Lowe's today, and they have the same program that you guys have. All they have is little signs. Nothing's lit, nothing's more than four feet high. Seems to work for them. So I don't really see this. In perusing the minutes from June, this whole board said eight feet would be more sufficient, yet you didn't change anything.
No, no, I didn't say that.
Yes, you did.
Well, I didn't.
Well, you just said 12, you said 12 feet is too tall. That's what you said.
Yeah, but I wasn't gonna vote for above, in all fairness to them.
And then Corinne, Ken, Jeff, and myself all said eight feet, and Becky also said eight feet. She would vote for it if it was eight feet.
And I voted against it, I believe.
Right.
Yeah.
You didn't change anything. I wouldn't vote for it, A, with 12 feet, and I wouldn't vote for it lit. So, that being said...
Well, just to clarify, I won't vote for it at eight feet either. I think the pole is ridiculous.
Right.
So, so don't say that I was for eight feet at the last meeting, 'cause I put up a sign.
Right now, you don't have the votes.
Can we present a sign option?
Uh, we would need, well...
Rich, is that allowed by them?
You guys.
I mean, we can take a look at it.
Sure. I don't know if that addresses Corinne's point. Is she voting on this?
Thank you. Corinne is.
Yeah, it doesn't really address, uh, the location.
So this, this sign option would be a four-square-foot sign. So we wouldn't, no, we would no longer need the variance for the sign size. But it would be full-mounted, practically what you're seeing at like your Home Depot pro parking lot, um...
Not lit?
Not lit. Not lit, practically what you see at Home Depot with the pro parking, eight-feet handicap sign, which is your reference.
Just one sign or five signs?
Double sign.
No, no, but I mean, is each parking space gonna have a sign?
So this pole would be, so...
Or just the one pole?
It would be, it would be two, two poles, if you will. One on each, here, like a... So I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go out here, uh, just to make it clear. See, these were the stalls...
Yeah.
Here that you parked in. And here's the, the walkway between.
Yeah.
We would have one sign there, one sign there.
Two signs.
Okay, on both sides.
Yep.
Yeah. And they're only eight feet.
Yeah.
And I think to Corinne's point, she's looking for you to move it down to that location, or some kind of compromise. Away from the front row.
I will have to respectfully say we can't do that, just for team members.
I'll vote for the sign.
I know there's people walking in and out of the store every day, but our team members are, are doing that over and over again.
So where would you put the signs? One end and one end, the other?
Yeah, so if you were to envision these there, so there's the, the line in between. There's no parking, that's where they walk. So the parking lot here, here, and then the pole would be between, it'd be two sign.
And then what do you, do you have cameras on these signs, so that you know when people park, pull in?
We have cameras on the buildings. But again, on your app, when you pull in, you say, "I'm here."
Okay.
And so that pings out a signal.
Okay.
So Corinne, are you okay with this signage?
I, I'm fine with the sign. Again, it's more the logistics of where these spaces will be located.
But would you vote for this?
Not with the spaces where they are.
Okay. Jeff?
I would vote for it.
I would vote for these signs.
I would vote for these signs.
This is exactly what I, I wanted. I have no problem voting for this. Perfect. It's amazing you already had it ready, ready to go.
It's Plan B, Bob. It's Plan B.
All right, so can I get a motion? We'll take a condition that this plan is the polls.
I'll do it, I'll do it.
I don't know, we tried to find the motion sheet.
Oh, yeah. Hold on. It's here somewhere. Mr. Chair, I would move that the board grant the variance, um, for the amended application to include a non-lit eight-foot-in-height sign.
Two.
Two signs. Uh, the drawing dated August 1st, 2019. Directional signage per Section 37.7A of the Danvers zoning bylaws. As the, uh, this condition does not affect other properties or structures in the same zoning district, a little enforcement of the zoning bylaws would involve a substantial hardship to the applicant. And granting this variance will not create a substantial detriment to the public good, and will not nullify or substantially derogate from the intent or purpose of the zoning bylaws.
Can I get a second, Ed? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
You got it. Good luck.